Now everybody.
But in your view, you had everybody. We have to record anyway?
No, I don't think so.
No, I think it has to do with the open meetings law. If we say that people can't come to the meetings, then we have to have it available for them to be able to get into it on a computer. But since we're still saying everybody can come, they just have to wear a mask and we don't have to record it.
Okay, so. Let's call the meetings order at seven oh nine. Scott is going to be fifteen minutes late. Scott is joining us shortly. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.
Thanks. Paul was like, why do you have to go? I'm like, because I have to. Ah. Yeah, that's very nice. That doesn't. Thanks. It still feel a little old, but you know, it's okay.
Okay, so I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I found that the government was as well protected as most CIA doctors, as usual.
Well, we had a national meeting today, but did you get it afterwards?
No.
Did you get? Okay, so we're all in favor of adopting the agenda.
I have seen. I had trouble getting into the stuff.
So I think some of those there updated. And we should be able to move on now. And we can pick up with your computer after and see.
Okay. This is probably high.
Unless it's ten o'clock, I don't think I want to. Okay, how about eleven minutes? Which are not printed out because it's been a while, so. Everybody needs to might have one back here.
I have a copy here too.
And we're looking to. Approve the delivery.
What's the rule? One second.
Thank you, guys. All in favor? Thank you, guys. Next up is the calendar, and I did not send an updated one trying to all this stuff, but there isn't much left for this month to do. And then I'm working on updating the twenty twenty two. I'm hoping things out a little bit better. I felt like we quite crunched at the end of the year. But so this month, there is still a town board meeting happening Monday. The survey grant due date, the report is due at the end of the month. We have to approve the budget at this meeting. And otherwise, that's about it, so. I'll say I'll work on the JIP two thousand twenty two. One. And maybe suggest a few tweaks when we start some couple of reactive reads that we're doing. So not everything is sitting.
I'm not going to be able to make it to the town board meeting on Monday. I have to go to Boston with my son, so if someone could. Yeah, I don't, if anyone wants to be there, then again.
I'm in class Monday night. Is there anybody else in? Oh, well, Sarah. Okay, thank you, Sarah.
I mean, I'm gonna have to double check my family.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Okay, so moving on to the rectum report.
So at our last meeting, we talked about starting up programming for children again. And I had a wonderful calendar all set and ready to go and was very happy, excited to start it. And then I found out that there were a lot of children out with COVID and that there were a lot of kids in quarantine. So I decided that today it's not the right time to start programming for kids at this point, especially with the low vaccination rates that we have in this, in this area for kids, so. We moved things online, so, and a lot of take home stuff. See all of our take home ornament projects to do. And we have actually had a good number of families come in and grab that stuff. So that was, that's been good. It's, and it's, that's our second round of colors. So we're, that's, that's it. If anyone, you know, wants to grab stuff, grab it now because that's the last of it. We don't have anything else left. We are still letting the Dungeons and Dragons kids play because they're the same group every day or every week. They're not changing at all and they're still wearing their masks, so they still are playing. And the mahjong ladies, I shouldn't say ladies anymore, it's mahjong folks are all playing. So, hi Scott. So for upcoming programs, actually, so we had a Medicare program at the Town Hall for the Seniors Group. Kind of pushed my way in, said, here, what do you guys want this? And it, well, actually, I found out from one person that it was extremely good and they had a lot of good information. And I don't know how Toby thought it.
Yeah, we actually had the guy come to our house and walk him through signing up.
Oh, great. Fantastic. Great, great. So there were about fifteen people there at that, at that one. So, and I'm glad I caught them because they've decided not to meet again until March because of the virus. You know, so it was a good timing for that.
It was really great that you made a in row with the seniors too.
That's what I was hoping for. And I think I told Judy Hunt, who's the president of the seniors, I said, I would love to work with you guys if there's more programs that you think you might be able, you know, like, let's work together. And so she said, you know, once the spring comes and when they're meeting again, we'll definitely do some more stuff together, so. The wreath making program went really well. We had twelve adults and one infant. So there was one complaint about the fact that they thought it was, someone thought it was a little too squished in here to be. And so it, I was like, this is just our beginning of learning what we're doing and how much we can really fit, so. She made, the woman made a good suggestion, saying, maybe you should say how many people are going to be at each one. That way people can then choose whether or not they want to be there. So I thought that was a good, good suggestion. So if I say, you know, twenty is the max, people can then decide whether or not that works for them. So that's a good idea. There were twelve altogether, so it was like one group of ladies who are all friends there. And then we had, we kept everybody on the outsides of the room, so, and facing the walls. So they were, you know, and then all the greens were in the middle. So it was, it was not as tight as it has been, definitely. And we thought we had spread it out enough, but probably could have done with a few extra or a few less people. But so far, everybody seemed to have a good time, so. There was only one suggestion, so. And we did not expect the baby to be there. So I don't know. That was, that was an interesting thing. So let's see, the wreath making, so upcoming programs, just to let everybody know. The book group is going to be on Tuesday. I'm doing a virtual PJ Storytime on Wednesday, the twenty second. We're going to give kids free books and they're going to take a packet home and then we'll read the books together online. I'll have, I'm thinking Crosby might be there. Rebecca, I'm not sure. I haven't talked to your dad yet, but hoping that we can maybe do something together with that. So that should be a nice way to, we usually do PJ Storytime before the holidays and maybe this will be a way to do it. So we'll see if we get anybody. Twenty second. Um.
It's a board meeting.
That'd be fun. Another big thing, if everyone can start, we're doing a blood drive on the thirtieth. Starting. From one to six. Yeah, so, but the Red Cross is at a desperate level right now, so. They are really, really struggling for, there's a huge blood shortage, so if we can get that filled up, that'd be fantastic. It is on the thirtieth. It's a Thursday.
I can volunteer to.
Oh, that'd be great. That'd be great. Yep. You can just go to the Red Cross, I think it's redcrossblood.org, and there's a link there that you can sign up, you know, go to find their schedule and stuff. And then just a couple of things that are happening in the next month. We're doing Wills and Healthcare proxies with the same agency that did the Medicare program. But we're going to do it here at the library because it's open to anybody. You don't have to be a senior. Diana Clark is going to be doing Women in the Military presentation on January. January twenty first. At six thirty, and then Greg Sider is going to be doing the Battle of Midway, same way he did the last time. And I believe we're doing that on the third of February. So we've got some stuff set up. Well, hybrid. We'll do. Yeah, well, actually, no, Greg is going to be completely virtual because he lives in Iowa. So we'll just do that the same way we did the last one. Yeah, and one other one that's going to be happening in March, I just don't remember the exact date we said. There's a woman who goes around and has done the Iditarod sled dog race in Alaska. And she comes and she brings her dogs and she brings the sled and she gives the patients, so she's coming in March. So I thought that would be. Saturday. Yeah, it's a Saturday.
I'm sorry, I know you said this to Diana Clark while speaking, Wes.
January twenty first. So far. So we'll do. Wills and Healthcare Proxy is the thirteenth of January. Okay, so. Circulation was down in November, probably because of the holidays and the starts of all that. So you can see your comparisons and our. Again, our loans to other libraries is still outpacing the loans or our. People borrowing here, but again, I think all holiday stuff and COVID stuff, so not terribly worried.
Specific request for books that we have that nobody else has.
Yes, well, it could be that nobody else has or that we just have available and we're next on the list. What I do for new books is we keep them so that you can't request them. So other libraries can't request them for two months. And then after two months, we put it out because there's sometimes hundreds of people waiting on a list to get these books. And if no one's taking them out here, I'd rather that they circulate, so.
But it is a testament to.
It is actually, it was great because what we noticed when, during the pandemic, is that we had a lot of items going out to other libraries that people wanted. So I was like, okay, this is, this is kind of showing that, you know, our collection is where we want it to be because it's got a lot of stuff that people need. And our total visits down just a tiny bit, but again, holidays, all that stuff. We have. I think even though we've only gotten through a couple of, I think I'm up to like the Ds for the people whose cards have expired, we have gotten a few people who have come back in and said, oh, I didn't realize. So we're, we're doing good on the, on that as well. You can see our collection staff, the. With all of the different, you know, our numbers in there. So I was able to attend our DA meeting this month. Ancestry dot com, library edition is going to be active until June twenty twenty two. But it's not going to be in an at-home thing. We don't have anybody who uses it at our library. You can keep track of how many people, who it is or what library they're from. We never really had anybody, so the option was going to be to pay for it. And I opted out. I said, there's no reason that we should be paying a couple of grand for ancestry or even a couple hundred for ancestry if no one's using it. So it'll be available in the library for people to use until June of twenty twenty two. After that, it won't be available here at our library anymore. The automatic renewals that I talked about last month was the, the vote to do that was tabled because there was some more discussion about it, so I'll keep everyone up to date about what happens with it. I spoke to Paul Mays about our master plan and this contract's been signed. And I have a committee meeting set up for June, or excuse, January tenth at six thirty. He wanted to meet with the committee, kind of like a kickoff meeting, so we can kind of get our heads together and figure out what we want to do next. So it's going to be Zoom again because it's easier, it's better for him. So January tenth, if anyone, whoever wants to join. The only thing is, is that I do need to know if everybody's joining because if everybody is, then we have to make it a regular. It's got to be a board meeting that's available to the public. I have to advertise it. If it's just a committee meeting with not everybody coming, then it can stay a committee meeting and doesn't have to go up to public because of open meeting law. So if anyone's not going to be there. Whoever doesn't. You did. Yes, okay, so never mind. We're good. It's a committee meeting now. Sorry. Okay, great. We can do it. I was going to see, I don't know if we want to meet here together and have, you know, Paul up on the computer. I think that might work well, or we can all just, whoever wants to zoom in or not, so. But I'll send out a link and we'll, I'll send it out to everybody and we can, does people want to come in and do it in person? Except you guys.
What is due May?
January tenth. At six thirty.
Oh, my God, is it, so. Believe something else was going to bring up, but it can be difficult. Rebecca, you can see, you can chime in and say you're having difficulty hearing right now. But I know Paul struggled a little bit the last time. With the meeting. Sometimes all virtual, everybody has the same. You know, audio, video, all of that opportunity. If not, I was going to raise later the thought that if we're going to continue with this hybrid approach, maybe we should get a microphone. Fire department had one at their meeting the other night and they acted, the mic was just over the microphone. And it, that was a much larger room and it picked up everybody.
Oh, okay.
We actually have a very good phone thing. We bought. Six, seven.
Phone system, if not a microphone.
Can't use it for, as a microphone?
No. So it can work on a Zoom.
Fairly cheap online. I got mine. It was like twenty or something. That's noise pressure.
We're going to be on this path for their. Yeah. When most people are here, it's really hard to hear everything.
You know, what's the name of the computer?
Rodden? Rodden.
And he's maybe even suggesting like a little work on computers.
He, I'm, yeah.
Software, same thing.
I said, I can, I can look it up. I think, no, I just said he has one. I know my kids have one at home too and, you know, they all, they're, they're a dime a dozen nowadays, I think. So. What's that?
But they all do the same thing.
Yeah. So I can definitely. I'll buy one of those. Have that for the next one. So do we want to meet though in person or through Zoom with, for the first meeting with Paul? I'm fine to do it through Zoom. It doesn't, but it, do you want to, just do it that way, make it easier for this time?
I'm okay with that, too.
Okay. Right. So I'll send out a link.
So we'll be doing it in group here with Paul or from home?
From home, yeah. I don't think he expects to be too long, so. Let's see, we've been working on the budget, which we'll go over in a little bit. Met with Jen for my annual review, which went good. I want to officially thank Maria Spear for coming back to the library and running the wreath program because she did that on her own time, even though I asked her not to, and she said no. And she was, this was her first time being in public with anybody since the pandemic started. So it was, she was very gracious to do that, so putting that out there. She donated some of the supplies. Yeah, she donated, actually, no, Zima's donated. So she went to, we went to Ioka first, bought a Christmas tree for Greens. The library paid for the Christmas tree. We didn't, there wasn't enough there, so we went to Zima, or she went to Zima's. And they just said, here, let's pile your car full of all these green clippings that we have. And she asked how much they wanted and they said nothing, so thank you very much to Zima's as well. That reminds me, I have to write them up. So, and then we also worked again with the fire department and with the Rensselaer County, getting toys for the toy drive. She gave us, what, another five bags of toys, I think, like big old garbage bags filled with toys. So there were some leftovers, I think, which we'll give out.
Yeah, we'll be squirting the leftovers, trying to feed more library.
Oh, great.
Corporate stuff, and then there were going to be.
Oh, great. Fantastic. Awesome.
Over twenty families. Something like that.
Wow. Oh, that's great.
That was it. Yeah.
I'm still working on the expired card program thing. I did send a card of thanks to Tony for his work on the library and for his artwork, which was the inspiration for the new logo. He did receive it and he gave me a nice thank you for it. That was, that was nice, too. I want to say thanks to Jen, Vicky, Elaine and Elaine's kids, Rachel and Gabe for representing SML at the lighted parade. You guys did great from what I hear. Definitely, though, I guess next year we're going to be doing cars instead or some kind of a truck or something. Keep up with the cars, guys. You can do it. Um, let's see, I talked about having, deciding to cancel this kids programs. And then I just have that we're going to be closed on. We were closed on Thursday and Friday, November twenty fifth and six, twenty sixth for Thanksgiving. And then we're closed the twenty fifth and twenty sixth of December, as well as the thirty first and first of January for Christmas, or for New Years. And then I just have some pictures for you to enjoy of our wreath making people. So that's pretty much it for me. Sure.
One is just a note. But you wrote about the community room use of John Wall and the old classes.
Yes.
I think in the, in the new year, the admin committee needs to just review the policy of building usage and donations. Charging people and make sure we're all clear on what we're doing on that, so mentioning that now, so that's another people's heads, too. And then, let's see, you even mentioned the Calcat books. And. That are also featuring that. And so are they all in now?
Yes, and I'm actually just getting all of our books, the books that we've already, that we've had in the collection for years into. It's actually, they're all in a big pile on my desk right now, so tomorrow they'll be on the shelf in a special section. And I am going to work on trying to get somebody, find someone to run some kind of a. Some kind of a discussion group or just something. I don't know what I'll be able to find, but I'm going to try. So I would love to do a program because like what Scott had just mentioned, that sounded great to me, so we're going to try it. I asked Logan if he would do it, but he's like, I would love to be a part of it, but not run it, so. Oh, that might be, that might not be a bad idea, too, yeah. The, yeah, if you want to ask, that would be great. I do know Mary Fellows, who's the Youth Services Coordinator at Upper Hudson, she was actually on the Caldecott Committee. So I'm going to talk to her and see if she knows anybody who might be able to lead a, facilitate a discussion group about it or, you know, some kind of presentation. I also have a cousin who was also on the Caldecott Committee from Brooklyn, so I might ask her if she wants to do something like by Zoom. But I think in person would be better, so. But yeah, we're going to work on that.
Any questions for the rectum report? So sorry to catch on it, but just again, looking at COVID nineteen. Phase and where we're at, and what we're expected to be for January moving forward. It seems like for the adult programming, we're more comfortable with the approach, but do we want to? Follow us? Think about kids programming, do we think after people find the opportunity to be vaccinated, will?
I again want to wait until we see the numbers in the schools go down. I think, what was there, like eighty-five kids out in school just this past week? So I think that if we can wait a little bit longer, see numbers start to drop with the school districts, then hopefully maybe we can deal with it that way because, you know, there's definitely. No. Yeah, no, the, Avril Park, I mean, they had like five kids out yesterday, four people out the day before, so, but it's not.
It sort of sounds like it's going to be inevitable if you're soft coming.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody's going to get it, but.
Literally nobody up for anything next year. This year, they've got kids all the way.
Yeah.
Teachers and staff, everybody. This, whatever this new variant has in it.
I think Rebecca was.
Yeah, the numbers, though, of kids out, those aren't kids that have COVID. Those are kids who have been contact traced just because they're doing a good job of, you know, finding, you know, figuring out who has been near who. And I think it has not spread in the school at all either.
Yeah.
But it's probably more like nine or ten kids that are positive, not eighty.
Okay.
Okay. But I guess with that number in quarantine, I know can part of your concern was sort of.
Are they going to stay in quarantine or join us?
Right, but I think the number of kids positive is equivalent to the number of adults positive in the community. I mean, I don't think there's a higher amount of kids with COVID rather than adults. It's just that the school does a better job than the general public of identifying close contacts.
Gotcha. So would your, I mean, what would your thoughts be on, on doing more programs for kids? Like, are you, do you think that it should be? Based on what you're seeing? Pushed off for a little bit longer or?
I mean, I would like to see programs for kids. I think you, we have to find a safe way to do it. I'm not sure the numbers are going to get better necessarily, but.
Yeah.
You know?
Oh, okay. Um, I know that a lot of libraries are not doing programs in this area for kids. The smaller ones are, but then the smaller ones are also. They're still having issues with the spread, so. I think it's something that we need to think about because I'm not comfortable yet. I would like to see more programs for kids, but there's just something with not as many kids being vaccinated.
I think it makes sense to wait and see the trajectory. It looks like it's rising all over the place and maybe sort of exponential because of this new variant.
Right.
We're, we don't know yet, so.
Right.
You don't have to rule it out, but, but give it a little time to see where things go. I, I get that. I guess the question is, so why are we okay with the adult program? I mean, if, if, if we're not requiring vaccination and we're essentially, like at the, at the point of January, kids would have the opportunity, if they were going to.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we, is it, is it odd that we're allowing adult programming, some of these older kid programs, but not opening up for?
Well, the five and younger.
Much less likely to be vaccinated, even though they have the ability now to be vaccinated. But. But the numbers are much lower. And they're just adults, so that would be one. But I mean, we're not, that's not our current criteria. We're not asking. Yeah. Right. So I mean, if that was our criteria, that's our criteria, but not.
Yeah.
But there's also formal guidance in both health department and CDC that pertains to adults. And I think if we were following that guidance, it's much less clear for children.
Um, but is it? I mean, right now, everybody is indoors, wear masks.
So distance. That's the high part is the distancing the kids. Adults are able to distance like so I was thinking do Lego club, you know? Okay, we're going to have a huge thing of Legos in the middle of the floor. Everybody's going to be on top of each other. I know that at school there there's no way you're social distancing in school. So you know, I understand that, but.
Well, I mean, one way to do Lego club would be to give each kid their own bin of Legos, separate them before. So it's not a big cluster and then they're only touching the Legos they're touching.
Right.
I agree with Jen that I it if you're doing adult, it's either no programming or, you know, everybody has programs because kids can get vaccinated now and kids are together in school, you know? They're doing plays, they're doing concerts. And I just think there's a way to do it safer.
What about for the younger ones who can't be vaccinated yet?
I mean, I guess five or four and under, you could. I know New Lebanon Library is doing Story Hour. I don't know how they're doing it. I'd be interested to find out. And I know Pittsfield Library is doing a lot of different kids programs. Teenagers.
No programming. I've tried. It does not work. No, the kids just don't. I think after a while you're they were done, but I'm hoping people will come for this virtual story time, but I don't know that they will. So we'll see. I'm gonna try. I mean, if we can give it a try and see how it goes, I I just with the numbers being so high in the schools and the numbers rising in in the county in general, I was concerned about that, but you know, we can see if we can do it. Give it a try, do a couple of things that are smaller things that, you know, go from there if that's what people want.
Things aren't clear. The science is not clear. The trends are increasing numbers very, very rapidly. Maybe if you're gonna make a decision with respect to this stuff, I would make a decision in a week or two. You get more information about the numbers in a week or two. I mean, even the risks are not clear.
Yeah.
If you want to lead in this area, you know, my thought on that, run programs, require vaccinations. Something that we do is that essential? And you can lead it in the community. You could also choose not to do that as well. And I'm just saying, there are lots of different ways of approaching.
Right.
And none of the well, some of them are wrong. But and but some, but some, you know, basically it depends on your style. I think any I don't think it's a great idea. Personally, I was reluctant to. I'm more and more reluctant to go out of uncontrolled situations. Other people share, don't share that view. And there's plenty of activity. I just think it's sort of improving. I would suggest the library era on being safe and constriction constricting programming until it's better information. It's just.
So would you then say the same for the adult program?
Yep.
Well, it's just just my view.
Yeah, yeah. I'm kind of there with you.
Well, basically, the governor announced that they were having a large Christmas party. I thought that was I was uncomfortable with it. I said, no, thanks. Thanks for the invitation. It was canceled yesterday. Because they're seeing the same thing that we're seeing. It's just like bringing and I'm not suggesting that a big event in downtown is the same as the other back here.
Absolutely.
And yet it's my chat programming, but it's also my
What is the reason we wouldn't like to require vaccinations, anybody who comes to the program? Seems to me that is a government policy. Forget whether you're right government or not, it's also a good idea. And so we should just say that. And that will reduce our risk substantially and everybody else's risk is involved.
So people need to bring their vaccine cards.
Yeah. Yes. It's not going to be a requirement and not, you know, making sure that.
I guess the only question is, do the librarians feel comfortable requesting it?
No, I I wouldn't feel comfortable requesting it. I know I don't feel comfortable requesting it because I'm not. It's not something that how am I going to police that? And you know, it just, I think that as a library, we're supposed to be open to everybody. Back, you know, that's a
This would be different programs.
Just programs.
Acting in.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a there's a material difference between what goes on in all libraries and usage numbers and what goes on the program. So quite frankly, our usage, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, there aren't a ton of people here.
No, there's not.
The maintaining space there is not a problem.
No.
That's that's space.
Well, that's kind of why I think, right, that's why I was like, I think that if we don't that if we can do that, then we don't necessarily need to ask for vaccination cards. The other thing to think about is that a lot of programs happen during the time when the library is open. So if we're asking some people to show us a vaccine card and not others, how do we justify that? Yeah, I don't think we're going to have that many people like because that just doesn't ever really happen. Even except for the big kids programs that we have, and I'm we're not obviously doing that because squeezing everybody in. So.
But you said that just that the wreath making was kind of crowded.
There was 12 people together. Yeah. And oh, it looks like someone is here. There were, yeah, it was a group of children, but we also stopped people from coming in. It was a you know, that was, yeah, yeah, we did.
Famous military program, don't ask, don't tell. And then you have to have that be vaccinated, but really much something.
I think it's risking the system. Any program, I'm just either you require it.
Well, I think we require, but
You require it. I don't. Let's start over again. My government service has been informative on this, and it's basically like there is a group of people don't follow the rules. And not confirming following rules, just as meditation for people who are behaving in a let's say irresponsible manner to other people.
I confer.
And it's just.
I also think that loses trust with the community. I've been places that say that they require vaccines and then I get there and they don't. And then I feel like I don't want to go back again because they're not actually following their own policy.
And that's not to say that the folks who are uncomfortable with getting involved in in a in a situation that can be confrontational. So it's not I'm not unsympathetic to that because it's hard to manage conflict. And if people really object to the governmental institution or store telling to get vaccinated and either being refused at the door, it's uncomfortable.
Definitely.
So what about taking a hiatus on all programs for a couple of weeks till after the holiday? It shouldn't be that difficult anyway because of the holidays. And and seeing where things stand, if things are starting to go completely out of control, then we move maybe to the requiring or none, or whichever makes the most sense of the point.
Well, we do have the program.
That's not here and that's not under our, no, it's at the fire department. So and the Red Cross, they do everything when it comes to that. So that has nothing. Yeah, they're really good at.
And you're constantly.
Yeah. Um, they make sure they say in their information that they're following CDC guidance and they they follow all the rules and stuff. So that's that's a whole other situation. No, it's too small. The space is too small. I had tried. I had asked if we could do it here, but it was too small. So what's that? Yeah. So hiatus then for a few weeks, see how things go and then kind of reevaluate at the beginning of the year. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Um, yeah, that can actually, when they're not going to meet anyway, I don't think until after the holiday. So and if they have to, if they're really into it, they can do it. The only other group I would be concerned about would be the Mahjong groups because they're they're they've been a consistent group coming to the library for a game, you know, so I don't know. We feel like that's just.
I think we have to be consistent if everything else is off, then Mahjong's all over there.
You may be later. You didn't find that all folks are vaccinated?
They are.
Oh, in that case.
I'm just saying, you may that may not be an issue.
There it's not I that I know.
We don't create an issue. We only have two buses are still likely to be to the end of the year. So we can effectively have it for seven acts of the year and still have these two come. Don't seem to be bothering each other. So we have to have a policy if nothing can happen.
I mean, Mahjong really isn't one of our programs.
No, it is. No, it's it's one of ours now. Yeah.
My concern is why it's a loss of them. And as soon as you break it up a couple of times, it's a quip for a long time. So if these people doing it, they're all perfectly happy and they understand the risks.
So the book group is Tuesday. I was planning to come. We could do it remotely. We have the link. I know people don't like that.
Yeah. See, that's this is where we come into the issues is do we, you know, continue with it? I guess. I think that for I think what my thought is, is for the adults, your adults are making the decision for themselves. Whereas for kids, you've got other people making decisions for them, whether it's the right decision, a safe decision. Who knows? The other thing, too, is like with quarantining children, are parents going to follow that quarantine? Are we, you know, are kids who have been exposed, parents saying, oh, this is all a bunch of nonsense? And then just going to come to the library because their kids are bored and they need something to do. So they're like, oh, we don't care, you know? So those are my my concerns with children. And with adults, everyone's an adult. They know how to wear their masks. They can they can stay distanced. They know how to do all of that stuff. And they have the opportunities. They've had the opportunity to have all three boosters, you know, all three shots now, like so. I guess that's why I feel more comfortable with adults coming in than with well, you know, the littler ones, like the teenagers even. I can make them wear their masks. We can make sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to do. So you know, it's it's one of those.
I think all that, at least, I would prefer that we wait and see what the data is.
Okay, so.
I mean, not everyone, that's just where I am.
I'm there, too. Also, I think that you can have all of your vaccines and boosters and still get it. Now, you may not get them to it, but you know, you're still totally people.
You could still give it, too.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
I just think we have to be consistent.
Yeah.
We can be like, well, yeah, but they I think we're I think they're vaccinated. So.
Yeah.
Like, it's gotta be consistent.
What's that? Yoga is not a library program. That's 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 a community. Like, we don't, that's a community thing. So that's not technically a library.
And it takes place when no one else is here.
Yeah, yeah, it's not when we're open. So.
Well, a couple of weeks just to pass the year. I don't think there's gonna be a summer.
What is that with the families?
Chances are we have the same question in two weeks. But still. I mean, given so much.
Yeah.
I mean, it's sort of like truly crazy. And they felt great in the summer and finally using their vaccines. And now it's year of the vaccines, but they work. What's this variant? That variant, numbers are changing. It's not great.
Um, so per post, then we can we'll table programs until after the new year. See where the numbers are and then go from there. I'll keep things scheduled that are scheduled for January, but if we decide that, you know, things are even worse than they are now, then we'll cancel and.
So would the book group, would you like me to ask people if they'd like to do it remotely or just say, let's wait till next month and see what they are?
That's up to you. I mean, I'm I'm not going to be able to be there because I have to make sure they have to be in Boston with Rayland. So if you want to wait a month, I would love to read the book. So.
January unhappy when it was all made to do. Yeah, people were falling by the wayside and then people started to come on the version here and not that we found a crowd, but you know.
I just wonder, because Janet's book groups have they're different, but people like the Zoom format.
Yeah.
They found that the discussions were actually a little more focused on the book.
Yeah.
It was a different experience.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I didn't mind the Zoom version.
I mean, I've listened to some of them. They both seem pretty good. So I'm just surprised that people.
I think people, yeah, it's just a different feel. I think people prefer to be, at least around here, people prefer to be in person.
Well, I think one of the one of the things it's solving for is country too isolated. This is a way that I can get together with people. Never we get together with people and you're sitting in the same old chair and looking at the same old computer. Doesn't really.
But it's a new bottle of wine.
You don't have to share. Um, I think that if we wait a few weeks and then we can talk about it via email again, like, you know, putting it out there to see what people say and then go from there.
So do we have a date? We will wait until we will regroup.
How about we can regroup on around January 5th? That gives us five days after the holiday.
Okay. And we will let all of the groups know that we're out of business for the event.
Yep.
Unless it's remote.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to treasure report. So in good shape, as you can see in the report, there are two expensive camps that were outstanding, waiting after we're cameraing our beginning of the report. In the last few days, we spent a little bit more on insurance. Either way, we're still in good shape for this year, ending with a surplus that we did not plan on. So that's the news. Remember, our earnings by $18,662, basically. And we have money left over in our savings. And we have money left over in our savings account. Which has been building over the years. Um, as Ken mentioned, Ken, Jen and I had finished our budgets, so you guys should. We have copies here if you'd like to see in person and there's copies of the proposed budget. But I just wrote this down tonight. If anybody doesn't have copies. To go around, but looking at our base. Total for the year, if you add up our. If you add up our guaranteed income, our expenses. And. I wrote down what the fundraising needs are actually what we plan for in the budget. Um, but the difference between our guaranteed income and expenses is a little under thirteen thousand dollars. So we're planning on, we budgeted for fundraising fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, which covers the difference. In our income versus expenses. So that's kind of if you. Take all of the budget numbers and break them down as quickly as you can.
You can't position expenses that actually out of pocket or to the extent that we're putting money in some of the. Let's say the capital accounts.
We did make a couple of, we made a separate line on the income side and on the expense side for the master plan as well. So those two balance each other out, but it's in there. So that you can see that we're actually transferring money from one account to our another account to cover that cost from the special projects.
That took us like a half hour in the bucket meeting to figure out, so that sounds confusing.
Jen, I think your computer just died.
Oh, no.
Well, you you logged off of the Zoom, so. But it's still recording, so you know, you can still hear it, but. We were doing good with computers for a long time. Yeah, those are just categories.
So in past years, in recent past years, we've been voting to, at the end of the year, move some of our. Either the money that we earned in the annual appeal that we don't need to spend or part of our cushion into a special project account. Which maybe is something that we'd like to be budgeting again this year, especially since we have. Plans. Master plan coming up. Um, but we do have leftover money that we can do that with again, or use the eighteen thousand dollars that were over. I think I should have looked at this ahead of time, but I think last year we moved ten thousand dollars into the special.
We moved everything that was done and gained in the annual appeal. So I think it was thirteen thousand is what the amount was.
Ian, that's your budget. Will you cut a line item for the master plan?
That's what we, yeah, we do. Hold on, hold on, hold on, sorry.
For the cost of what we're paying the architects versus what is resulting from the plan?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be separate lines for all of that. Right now, we're not paying. Obviously, we haven't done anything, so there's only a line for what we're paying the architects. But once we start on anything else, then we'll have separate lines for all of that as well. But it will all be underneath the master plan, so we can kind of see where things are, like what we're spending money on. We'll keep it all separate. That would just be food that I get for our staff. No, it used to be things like our conferences and stuff, but lately it's only we've just our meeting to go to, so it's food, basically. Yes.
The items that are that expensive that we don't really have much. Money for like really on on the sending, going to some of the things that are more like program type things and things that. We might be able to work on. I think we're in a pretty good place with that right now. And the fundraising goals. Are a little bit higher. And the fact that some of that is with the idea that they might get some events is. You you know, questionable in these days, but I I think that it's not, I don't think it's that meaningful. The fourteen thousand five hundred, I think that's. So I think, you know, I think I feel pretty comfortable with the.
The American Library Association.
And you know what we're up to in earnings for the annual appeal now?
You were in my zone, right?
Yeah.
We're more than that now.
Are we in committee reports? Because sort of we sort of revert into the budget from the.
Yeah, fundraising is about the annual appeal, so it's sort of fixed here too.
So we need to do two things. We need to keep going and at the end. Vote on the budget, otherwise the board has a chance to look at it. Everyone will be questioned. We can just jump ahead on the agenda. Follow the budget now and then continue with committee reports. Just give you another minute of the budget and see if you have any questions.
Where is this? Master plan?
So there's a line. Forty-four MP is where we have said we're pulling the money in for that. And then that's almost the last, the last page. Five, five, four, four, MP. Designated. And for that, again, it's like Melanie said, it's really just an accounting thing. It's just we're putting it online here and putting it online there. We've already. We already know we have the funds. We've already talked about. How it's coming out of that, so it's just a matter of being able to show. Show it here.
There's a line for a thousand dollars for fundraising events. This is a period previous years. Is there plans for thoughts about what that's going to purchase?
So I actually have basically. A my fundraising report. For the fundraising and for events. I I told on here, it's allowed to ask guests for how much it might cost to put on an event to raise. To raise money. So it was just a. I don't have right now, and it's something I'm going to talk to him about. For two twenty twenty-two planning. I'm doing a little analysis of previous fundraising efforts and things, so I don't know if we have any details from previous events in terms of what things cost. I know often things get donated, but so it's in there as a placeholder of, you know, we might have to spend money to. At something, something.
So that money is probably hidden somewhere. It's been here in previous years.
Um, probably not. It's probably a lot of the times what happens is that everybody's been donating their services or their goods or their, you know, so. Yeah. So that's that's pretty much.
Well, because we don't have, we don't.
Questions, comments? Rebecca?
Listen, she's talking out of there before.
Yeah. Okay. So.
Oh, no.
Melanie, you said last year we moved thirteen thousand from the annual appeal into special projects?
We don't have a total for the annual appeal for this year, but we have a total of what we're over already in earnings. I would recommend fifteen thousand. That's a little less than what we're over in in earnings, and we still have an additional cushion in the savings account.
So you're recommending moving fifteen thousand into special projects?
How much we've spent already?
Just like a cushion saying that, you know, things may happen when you design special projects. Maybe we should, rather than put everything in special projects, create a, you know, basically. Also minus a certain percentage so that under marking is special project and even the inflation runs a little higher. Costs utilities are a little higher, whatever, building like five thousand dollar. Around or, you know, whatever is appropriate. Just have a line item with another secretary.
Well, we do have our the the savings account, which has, even after, if you take out the fifteen. From that, you're gonna, you'll still have, you know, forty or thirty-three hundred dollars or thirty-three thousand dollars left in that account. Yeah, that's just our savings. So if we need to go into that, then yeah, we can.
Thirty-three thousand.
Did I say fifteen? So forty, no, sorry, forty-three.
Forty-three would be left.
Yep.
And then a certain, some of that money is created for.
Um, any, the money that we were going to use for the architects was coming out of the special projects fund, which has twenty-nine thousand in it. So we're still. Pretty good.
Okay, so Ken.
Reoccurring this twenty-two thousand dollars net income, but you're putting the money in discussion service if not in space. So your net income is twenty-nine thousand.
Okay, that's why, that's why we needed out these numbers, because the budget is confusing in that way that so much of that funding here is. Sitting in a place and that was the accounting thing that we were talking about, that we had to figure out how we're moving money that we already have that's not actual income because we saved it. So we figured that out in an accounting way, and when you look at it in the full budget, it is like.
Well, what I'm seeing, that that part, the part that's probably justifiable, I don't think six thousand dollars should be a footnote or something rather than. Income status. Because it isn't, it belongs actually in total, you can state it.
So it's. So it's just because I have to keep a track of it in some way, I mean, we could just delete it from the budget, like there are some things that I have in QuickBooks that we don't even put in the budget because it pertains, like our, all the summer, the summer stuff, summer camp things. It doesn't even, I mean, it doesn't have any impact whatsoever on our budget, so I just take that out, so that it's not one more item that we have to look through. So, I mean, it could technically be taken out, but it's still good to see that we're still transferring or we're putting that money aside, and that money is getting placed in a special account so that, so it is kind of coming out of.
We are budgeting that we want that much money to vote.
Right, so even if it's not coming.
I didn't say exactly what's happening, I'm just saying that. So I think it. I understand we're not doing balance sheets or like doing statements.
Yeah.
Usage of funds, and so, I don't know, I need a place to put it.
I know, Kim, you said you reviewed before the account in terms of. If you're okay with how it, that, so. If we're good, that's, knowing that this is probably. You know, we have to express this in a financial document, but in terms of the meat and potatoes of the budget, are we ready to vote on it? Okay, so can I have a motion to accept the twenty-two budget? Okay, thank you, right, in a second. Okay, nine seconds, all in favor? Okay, thank you. And then, so can we get the motion to dollars that's currently in my market, am I saying that right? My market into special projects? I make a motion.
The physical rule is to check each other.
No, it's.
We have a special project account.
We have four accounts together.
We have quite a few accounts. One, two, three, four, five, we have six councils together. It's all the same account, but it's like designated for different things. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we have a second, all in favor? Everybody? All right. Sorry, two seconds. Okay, great, that's a big item for today. So moving along, we started to touch on this, fundraising report, so annual appeal, we're tracking that, we're already over nine thousand, like something more than even that typical size of two day or five hours in. So, so far that's forty-seven donors. We had, for online donations so far, we had three from PayPal, so that was new this year, PayPal, eight from Square, so seven hundred and ten dollars came in online. We had eighteen new donors, one new car holder donated, and we had thirteen of the large donors that donated so far. So ongoing, we're trying to get thank you notes out within a week of proceeded donation. I have been planning an email send, which I mentioned in the plan, I ran into a little snag of mail him, he may not work on that, I just need to update the list, but I'll probably get the next round in before I, I send that out. We're not putting anything, and he was already doing it. And then we'll do another Facebook post push, probably the last year of the, last month, last week of the year. Sort of that final, like, hey. In other news, so, so, and you'll feel very good shape, any questions on that? Alice Rosie contacted me about making a larger than normal donation this year. So she's maybe donating twenty-five hundred dollars, and after discussing two, I think about her, we're going earmark it as our second line, but specifically for landscaping projects, so sort of continuing the legacy that she and Bert led the library, going to see what they did, she was very happy to be able to try to help do that, help us refresh the, the gardens out front, and as we look at other landscaping projects, you know, talk to her about how we're trying to find more outdoor space to use and use that space better and make it more cool. So she was very excited about that, she asked, she says she would be happy to be a long distance consultant of plants, so if we have questions regarding like what was, what's in the, what's in those garden beds, what was the intention? She would come out, she was not, you know, different things like that, she's willing to do that, and also open questions or want to run ideas by her, she was happy to do so, and she is in town occasionally. And it sounds like she might be able to do sort of ongoing donations to support this kind of thing for the library, and that'd be a great, huge big weight off our shoulders, so that would really, really create.
No, Northampton.
And then, second sheet just shows you, and we mentioned the, the budget aspect for fundraising, so ten thousand for the annual appeal, four thousand dollars for events, for expenses against that, seven hundred dollars against the annual appeal for postage, jumble of labels, that kind of thing, and then a thousand dollars for events, just, you don't have a plan what it will be, yeah. So we'd have a net of twelve thousand three hundred. I think that seems like a reasonable goal and probably not such a stretch, yeah, so. I would like to schedule a meeting in January to discuss ideas for fundraising, so a little bit of like brainstorming, and a little bit of looking at like what has worked in the past, different things like that, some kind of analysis, and start to plot out what that is, so we can get a jump on. Because I think it's one of my few revolutions, I suppose, for, for the library, but I think the, the planning aspect of things and getting a jump on is early or something that we could use, whether it's leading material or promotion or planning. Then is that, I think it'll actually make life easier and less hectic, so. But as we look at the evolving COVID situation too, we're going to have to be better monitored with the fundraising, what we're thinking about, we'll have things that can be flexible to shift or, you know, don't involve in person in case things go south. And any questions fundraising? Strategic planning?
We went through all of the various meetings and last meeting. So just going. Especially we're already down the last meeting, hyped up so. I addressed that, it's the idea that you're considering a very specific plan. Well, we should have a plan, we should have some specifics in here of how we want to spend the money. Actually, not to keep saying this, but I do categorically believe that we really have to do a plan in conjunction with budgeting in order to figure out exactly what we should be doing, and it's got to be done together because you don't have enough money for this, so that's a good idea. So what I put in was just to think, we've been discussing, yeah, it's so in budget, because it's totally tied into the budget. But we are, we have considered these things. And so rather than say that's what we're going to do. Discussing and have discussed and really interested in doing. We haven't actually figured out what we can yet. A lot of different from last year.
So it's not necessarily a hill I'm going to die on, but I'm going to say this is a strategic document, it's something like that we share with public that we, that we measure ourselves against, so see how we're doing and measure as we have come up with ideas, but I just really don't think it's a place to have super specific things, even like the Hello Library literature that, like, that kind of evolved last year and next. I think we need to be general, and that's to say, you know, we want to program opportunities for children, that might be one thing, but be really specific about the kind of tactics, yeah, the work we're going to do, I don't think that's really the. I don't think this is the right place, but I think that that is something we're going to communicate, it's just a craft specific plan, but this is really to show where we're artists north stars, or here's what we're.
In your review, yes, but in the, no, that's why we have various levels, long term, medium term, and short term from this. And in the short term, we should be thinking about what it is we really want to do. So I disagree completely, I think we really should be fairly specific, given we have no other document that talks about what we are thinking about doing.
We do have other documents to talk about, though, we have our committee report for, we're.
Plan, that we have plenty of notes, just what we have done, if we want to do, but it's not, it's not agreed on. I mean, because we, we hashed all of that, this wasn't something that any one person filed, this is all, I believe, where everybody involved came up with. I mean, when you do a budget, you say, gee, we're going to spend money, but what are we spending? And so what I'm trying to do is, because we've come a long way in the planning process the last few years, and then what I'm trying to do is get people to realize that we really want to do the budgeting, should be thinking about what we're specifically going to spend the money on. Well, you may change your minds and certainly flexibility throughout the whole organization, but we should be saying, gee, we decided we want to buy the roof, okay, so we have to budget for that. It should be specifically in the plan.
The master plan is going to give us that, up to those big level items, that's going to direct us to get that together. And we have done the planning for, but that's still, and for the short term plan, I think we worked through those things to sort of say, here's those projects, we started to get asked, that's part of what we used for the public. But who knows, like, I'm not sure if those are really. Yeah, I mean, they say maps are strategic things, but they're not. Whether or not we do that specific thing is not necessarily what we need. It's more like we're talking about what, what we're presenting to the public, and that we agree that these are things that we can think about doing, and seems like some of this stuff is going to wait for what we decide to do with the master plan, but that may be what we're presenting to the public, doesn't mean to be that specific, even though it's helpful for us to have specific plans.
The strategic part is the long term part, the philosophy, the ideas, a lot to go in long, long term. Yes, we're going to have a master plan that's coming here, but it's not something we're going to be acting on in the next six months or earlier, because it hasn't even been bought yet, we're going to be negotiating, discussing, figuring it out. But in the meantime, we have to run the library, and so, yes, we have some flat things, which I didn't think, nobody else thought was important to put into this plan, like, how much are we going to spend on salaries or any of that good stuff? But in terms of what special activities, yeah, we did talk about them, we did agree that these things were a consequence, and some of them have to be done before the master plan possibly even, doesn't exist yet. And then going in future years, what we decide to do with the master plan should be part of this plan also, so we decide, gee, we're going to change, you know, paint our bookshelves, that would be a specific thing that we do next year, the twenty-two three plan.
Does this, though, stop us from doing, saying we don't want to wait until twenty twenty-three to paint the bookshelves? Is this kind of pigeonholing what we can and can't do, if we say we want to do this, and if someone in our public says, well, you guys just painted those bookshelves, it's not in your strategic plan, why did you do that, shouldn't that have been approved for the following year? Couldn't we say, couldn't, could that become an issue? Or say someone said, oh, well, you guys said you were going to use this Hello Library grant, we didn't hear anything about that. Where is that about? It, it doesn't allow us the flexibility to change our programming should we want to, and programming, I mean, in general, the programming does not necessarily need to be approved on by the board, that's not something, you know, we can, having programs throughout the year, I'm not, I don't need to ask, what can I have and what can I have, you know, and if, that's in the strategic plan, it's in a way saying. Right, and strategic plans are supposed to be long-term goals, it's not, it's not a year by year, month by month. I think, at least that's what my understanding of a strategic plan is, it's five year, here's your goals for the next five years, figure out how you're going to do it, and that's what the strategic plan is. After that, it's up to the committees and to, you know, all of us to figure out how we're going to do that, but it doesn't need to be in a document that we're voting on and saying, this is what we're going to be doing, because what happens if things change? This doesn't allow us that flexibility, so, you know, we want to get new curtains, okay, well, what happens if we can't get new curtains for the year? And we have someone who's like, he says, you said you were going to get new curtains, and it's in your plan, and you guys voted on it, and now you did it. I, I think that when you get specific like that, it can become an issue in terms of.
And, but I also think that we have to think about specifically how this money is going to be used, but it's the purpose.
We just don't have to do it within this.
Where I come down on it is, is you said, I mean, some of the stuff is, is just maintenance, it's just operational maintenance items that I don't think are, you, wouldn't be put in a strategic plan. We put together maintenance lists, I don't know, about ten, fifteen different items of what we were doing, short term and long, which serves the very purpose we wanted to, it's sort of like, okay, here's a list of things that are coming up, we listed that, we're getting, we'll get estimates from it, this is what we think it's going to cost, because of what we're doing. And you guys use that in your budgeting document and say, okay, this is what we're going to do. Curtains, I mean, yeah, we're picking on curtains, that's something that.
Probably a good thing.
Well, yeah, I mean, but it's. So, I mean, I think I shared a view that this is more exceptional document, I don't think binding document in any way, people are always going to comment about this fact, and whatever the, excuse this, this strategic plan and say, you said you were going to put curtains behind some of those calico things, calico things that I really, really wanted it here, yeah, what the hell are you doing? I'm not sure that that's, I don't, I don't really care. If that's the level of criticism that's being generated, then we're doing it up for the job. But. I think in a certain way, this is an outward facing document, which probably ought to be for, so you're talking, but you're talking about long term goals, middle term goals, and short term goals, and the short term goals may just be something like making sure that the, you know, the room is appropriate and.
Big picture.
Yeah, it's something, something like that, and then if someone's really interested, they could take.
Those aren't doing that.
And then they will give up fifteen items. I mean, I think if, I, you're, you're not. I don't think that this should be the operational plan in the sense of where we spend the money. I mean, I think if, I, you're, you're not, I don't think that this should be the operational plan in the sense of where we're spending money for. In, in your term, we've got a budget for that, and this is a little bit more general.
I, I agree. What I'm trying to do is force a discussion, so we start thinking about the budgeting process in conjunction with the planning process. We do the two things completely independently, and it's...
Well, we, I feel like...
I feel like the people who've done the budget aren't thinking about all these various things. In fact, they're thinking mostly short-term, because, yeah, make sure you pay everybody, I think, second go, like, whatever the things are that you've done short-term. But I think that we should be saying, I, I'm probably gonna have to take these things out. If, if the concept is that we should have someplace to be in, and I don't know what that in is yet, but that's what I'm hearing. But if we had some kind of a plan for next year, that tied into the budget, and why we stick, stick to the numbers we had, that would be fine with me. And then the maintenance thing should be a, you know, bunch of budgeted items, and we should be thinking about that. We should know what we're gonna have to spend.
Right, that's why...
I think that that's what the...
We have to ask committees to put together their recommendations for the budget.
Then have been pushing that for a few months, to ask the committees to give a report to the budget committee so that we can make sure we have everything that we need in the budget. And that did happen a little bit from some of the committees.
Oh, no, we've made a lot of progress.
I think that's where the specific ones start from.
As much as I wanna see calico curtains, it's fine with me if you take it out of this. I just wanna make sure that we start thinking in the future.
I think you're right. Well, yeah, but let's parse it out. Okay, you've got, you've got...
Let's take it out.
No, 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 but that's not the point I was making, I was saying, green curtains, okay? I think the curtains, but we'll be right along. You, you've got a list of long-term and a little bit longer than, than the short-term, and a little bit more than short-term projects, or just things we can keep happening. We're getting a master plan, which will be a big-picture document, both in terms of more long-term plant issues, which we don't have that information about. And then ultimately, longer-term, more ambitious projects, which again, you're putting money in sinking funds, sinking funds, in special accounts, in anticipation of those kinds of expenses. We've thought about painting, that's, you know, basically, we've identified different items. So the question I've got for you is, what things are we missing in the budgeting process? We're missing in identification, maybe user just speaking in general, that we haven't been thinking about? I mean, some of these things are real soft, like what we'll do with the building, okay? But that'll be developed, so what else are we missing?
In terms of, at this point, talking about, there's not all that many. Didn't used to think about the fact that...
We just thought about paying the electric bill and paying salaries.
Right. To some extent, it was a function, lack of funds that we had, we could fight the fires off. I'm not sure whatever we want to take out. I know Jenny has basically taken out everything below, both with the architectural fund, in terms of this point three. It's fine with me to take them out as long as we have this discussion and...
I think there's a, yeah, the level of detail is just too deep for a lot of... If you look at the outline, and you keep the upper-level bullets, and, and think about strategy. You wanna optimize the library's physical resources to support evolving needs of the community. We wanna do that, but how we do that, I don't think belongs in this document. That, that belongs, I think, maybe in the master plan, but I may be wrong on that, too. It, it needs to be somewhere, but this outlines what we want to have the library achieve. And I don't think it should address necessarily the specific whats that we do to achieve it.
I think at this point, we're being agree, but I'm just saying, we need something that tells us specifically what we're going to do. And this isn't the place. Can we put off, we plan for a little more session, or...
I think that's fine, yeah, that's a final one, yeah, January, yeah, yeah.
One of the things I just raised, which is a conceptual one, I mean, there's a lot of stuff about veterans in the current term before. In terms of the selection of trustees, I mean, it would be nice if we had a veteran on the board, but I don't think, I mean, I think our obligation as trustees and stewards of this institution is to find and look for people interested in libraries. And I don't see that there is any particular reason to have a veteran as opposed to a Mason, as opposed to a... And I just think that it confuses the mission of this library a bit, but while there is nothing wrong, and I think it's, I stand to be working with the organization and helping as we can. I don't believe that it's necessarily a function of the library, or something in the strategic plan to become sort of an auxiliary for the veterans' organization. And you read this plan, and it looks like we're doing something more than honoring service to the country than we do. And I just think it's a little too private. So, I mean, I think the high-level objective makes sense for the library, but some of the specific points, I think are a little... I, I just find a little... I just, I think it's... I think it aligns, it's sort of, I mean, it sort of turns this into service, you know, it's sort of, it's nice to help other organizations, but I don't think it's the mission of this library to provide support services to the organization, quite as it's expressed. And that just may be a direction issue.
That's something I've really figured much personally, so I just don't know, tell anybody, really, just...
I'm just having my reaction to it. It's sort of like, I understand where it's coming from, it just seems, it just seems a little bit strange.
I think, I think I see what you're saying, Scott, as I look at it. And again, I just see, again, it looks so specific, you know, that, that, that makes it sound...
Yeah, and more than what we're really, really... That was my sense, it just sort of like, it seemed a little off, and I, I mean, it's got, looking for a veteran, just got me as odd, for whatever reason. You want, I mean, a veteran who's, I mean, Bob was interested in doing, he was a great trustee, but it wasn't by virtue of being a veteran. Or maybe it was, I think, you know what I mean?
The relationship of the library to the Veterans Association has been on and off over its history. There've been long periods where there was minimal contact and affiliation and, and other times, it was a little more. It, it's been pretty hands-off for a long time. Maybe that's something that could be, could at least partially addressed, but...
It seems that we've already started to address it via Diana Clark and her being interested in keeping in touch and seeing how we can work together. So it's more that we want to honor the service and sacrifice and, you know, open our arms to work together where appropriate, kind of thing.
I think also that you, the board has reached out and is like helping out with the, um, their annual luncheon, or had been until COVID. Um, I think that that was something that was just at least helping to honor and to, you know, so I think that those kinds of things are definite. But do we need to have them specifically? I don't, I don't know.
We can make that, yeah, that's smart enough. Yeah.
Yeah.
If I turn into a pumpkin at some point, it seems like we're in agreement to work on this much, just for the next meeting, which I would be holding.
Yeah, something else we have to go on, um, so... Okay, so, we have a department master plan, I think we have some of that, and then we're looking up any of the space and then I think the updates that's to be added on. Building grounds, any updates, we've got open items on trees?
Nothing on trees.
Um, actually, NICEAG called here, and they asked if we were happy with the tree work that was done. I haven't yet been able to call them back. There was no, I don't think there was any tree work done, um, not that I've seen. So, um, they wanted to find out whether, and I, my point would have, is going to be, they need to be taken down. Exactly, there's still five trees out there that are compression down onto your telephone pole. So, um, I will be calling them tomorrow. Yeah, yeah, it was just basically... Yes.
Better, like, over the, the electric wires.
Yeah, the, the, was it, one of the arborists was telling me that, you know, there's at least two that are in immediate danger of falling down and need to be taken down as soon as possible. So we were trying to get NICEAG to do it instead of having to pay for it ourselves, because they're so close. They did call, they did, so...
We're not looking for a trend, we're looking for...
Take them down. They reached out.
Um, can we make any progress with...
No, because Kirk, I haven't had, Kirk has not been around, so I have to get in touch with him again, too. Some of the main things.
Past times, or, well, today.
Today would have been great, yeah.
Uh, you got any questions, there's still a round?
No, because it snowed.
That's what I'm sorry about, that's what I feel like what happens every year is, you play, we're gonna wait till all the leaves come down. And then if the leaves don't come down and it snows, and then it's never back.
Well, it did happen last year. Um, this year, it snowed, that, we had that earlier snowfall, and, yeah, so... We can try and get that happen next year.
Oh, that was the other thing, just reminded me, sorry, that Alice mentioned that I should have said, I think I wrote it down, but I didn't say it. She really recommended, now that we know we're gonna have money, that we start in the winter season with trying to get the calls and get people engaged and contracted to do it, because it is so hard to, um, to find people. So I think that's a good idea, something to work on. She was also, she's a decision to know a lot of people anymore, but if there's anybody you wanna ask, it would be good or whatever.
Um, I, I, you know, like, I did call Andrew Zima, and he was totally booked, so, you know, we just kept crossing paths. Every time I would call him, he'd call me, and we, it would, so now that it's winter time, I'll try contacting him again and getting some quotes from him. Um, Andrew, from Andrew's Property Maintenance, he used to do everything here, like, he used to do all the gardening and all the, um, the mowing and everything. But then, um, we ended up moving to Kirk, because Kirk was quite a bit cheaper. So I'm not sure if Andrew is going to want to do, um, just the garden for us and not have the business of doing everything else. So we'd have to kind of weigh that as well. There was the other guy that I called to who said he wouldn't work for the library anymore, Alex Haley. That was not a good situation, so there is some bad, something happened between someone in the board and him, and it was not a very good thing. It was a long time ago, because I had known nothing about it, and I've been here for 10 years, so... Um, and then I was gonna also contact this, a garden or a arborist and another, you know, landscaper up in Petersburg, who's another local one, that they're incredible. I've been at their nursery a lot, and they're incredible, so I'm gonna see if they can give us some quotes, too. So, you know, let's get it started soon, find out.
Okay, uh, branding marketing, yeah, I have very much fun. The meetings that stem from the research project that we did to discuss the directory and newsletter, and also how we might be able to work with the town board on some of the other issues that were raised in the survey, have been pushed off to January 3rd, because it was some of the high winds and, and people wanted to do it remotely and counting. So we're doing that January 3rd. Um, we're also sharing the final report, summary of outcomes, uh, from the library's Transforming Communities grant with ALA, which has to be done before the end of the month, but we have it already written, and we're just waiting for, um, a copy of the press release that we sent to the SWIP. And we're, you know, we've obviously been integrating the logo into lots of things, and I think it looks great. I, I, have you heard anything back on, from any of the folks from the annual deal about it? Nobody said anything, nothing except, you know, oh, here's, here's, here's some money. Money talks. Yeah, I think that's weird, I would, I would think somebody's been calling, but, um... Um, and, um, I, I need to still look into, um, I don't know if you call the, the marketing collateral or, you know, um... I don't know which are the local ones versus others, so if anybody has names that I could look into for getting magnets and mugs, and, and we said bags, right?
Yeah, I think we're gonna get, yeah, a couple options.
Um, so I still need to do that, and that will probably be part of the fundraising discussion for budget purposes. I'm not sure how much, so we'll probably be in on that, yeah. They do, okay.
I think we're calling Net Friends, with the Z up there.
Net Friends?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I think I do remember seeing that, okay, no, thank you. Um, and then how are things coming with the website?
I'm working on it. I finished doing the backend stuff, making, um, our website with the catalog and stuff like that. I still have a couple of things, um, to reach out to Jen, to Kim, to be able to link to donation pages and the newsletter. I have in plans, within the next couple of weeks, come in and take some, some other pictures of the library, so we can integrate them into the website. But they have to be in certain, um, dimensions, um, so that they look right. So that's where I'm at in the next couple of weeks. I know that Kim mentioned that she has a couple of pictures of the library, and I'm gonna try and see if I can use those. If not, I'll come in and take some of them.
I actually have a ton, so I'm just gonna, um, upload them to Google Docs and then share it with you, so that you can have them, because there's a bunch.
Okay. That's enough for me. So recruitment, um, Rebecca, anything you wanna add there?
Nope, I mean, I think we talked about that we need to recruit a board member, but we're gonna wait till the new year after the holidays. So I guess just if anybody has anybody in mind, send me an email, but we will wait till after the holidays.
I just wanna remind everybody that we do need to have a replacement for Rebecca for meeting the youth committee, which is also high priority. Um, and related to that, um, as you start to think about committee assignments for the new year, if anyone feels like a shift to that could be beneficial, and we can see someone else shift into their, you know, chair of their committee, let's be creative that way, so that we can find the best fit for everybody. Give some, you know, time and interest and everything, so, spend any, spend a bigger holiday time compensating committee assignments and possible recruit, that'd be great. Go to a holiday party, you know, rock it out. Um, youth committee, uh, no updates there, Rebecca?
Nope, nothing going on.
Yeah.
No.
Administration, nothing going on there, I think we need to pick that up in the new year. Um, okay, old business, um, Ed... Um, okay, old business, um, Ed, you brought up the question around the ERC, which I know we talked about in the previous meeting. Kim was, I, I could use to refresh our memory on what was that, what the account?
Yeah, John said, um, he's not, they're not doing it because it's so hardly complex and a pain in the butt. So his firm is not helping people with that, so I just kind of left it at that, because I wasn't sure where we would go with it, so. And I don't know that we would, I don't know how much money we would get back, I don't know what the, the, um, I just don't know what the percentages are, you know.
Well, I contacted our account, you know, of the care rock companies, school or anything else, and he sort of dropped the ball, he sort of called me today, he didn't. Uh, one thing that he did say in emails is we have a couple of years to apply, it's not like we're about to lose the opportunity.
Oh, okay.
So we cover everything from May of last year to end of third quarter of this year. The kind of newest budget, um, bill, they dropped it the fourth quarter for this year, but still, it affects the amount of money for us. So I will, I will pursue it.
Do they get?
ADP, right?
Yeah, is it a hundred percent of re- reimbursement for the amount of payroll, or is it?
No, I, I can't remember, I mean, it, it, it's a fair amount, though.
Okay.
Thank you for pursuing that.
Yeah, no, it could go, because it's, it's just, I don't know, you've got free money, but.
Any other old business? Okay, um, we have no public hair, so no, no comments, very much. Um, new business, so, uh, as Kim mentioned, um, we went over her performance evaluation, so, um, in the Google Drive is the final document that incorporates everybody's feedback. Aggregated score and all of that kind of thing, so I think, you know, I'll say, I think we had a good discussion, we went over it, I think every, we felt, you know, Kim felt it was in line with her understanding of these couple, two things that we had talked about. And what we wanted to mention in the, in the board meetings, so, um, one of the things that, um. We're gonna work on the next year and, uh, Kim had a good idea for this, so sometimes it's unclear, either, um, you know, expectations around communication and response time and. Available today, should not, oh, I sent an email, should I call, I don't know, should I Facebook, you know, point out different ways of communicating and everything. So, um, one thing that she suggested she could do, she could try to do is, um, post, send us or send whoever's interested, um, her, her schedule for what she's expecting her availability to be. That way we know, like, okay, well, she's not, so, you know, this is an emergency, so I'm not gonna call her, not, or whatever. Um, so I thought that would probably be helpful to people and also help us understand a little bit better sort of her. And for you to have actual time away from life.
Is there such a thing?
So if you're, if you're good with getting emails on that, so you have it, you know what's, what's going on.
I'd prefer to have you just send an email if you don't answer two days.
I can send it to who's ever interested and, um, you know, my thought is that on the last day of the week, of each week that I work, I'll figure out what my schedule will be for the week after. And I'll just send it out to everybody and then go from there, so. And actually, maybe I'll stick to it, so then I can actually have time to myself from other things I need to do.
Uh, and then one other thing is just, you know, talking about, you know, we, we talk a lot about sort of the delegating, and we, we, Kim and I talked specifically about some things and, and, and things on the way with that. As well as looking at where there's not opportunities to delegate, where are we just running up against, you know, there is not time for that. And, you know, again, another New Year's resolution, I suppose, but like, as we come up with ideas, having that reason, like, having a real. Making sure that we know that we can handle this, and if we do this, does it mean something else can't get done? And, and really making sure we're comfortable with the people around certain things that, that are work, you know, Kim's time, she's willing to do it for it, you know, there's somebody else, um, that can do it. I know she's, uh, looking at, you know, as well as somebody who works for programs, person, time, things like that, so, you know, as we see how that evolves, you know, but I think that's gonna be more. You know, I think you have to jointly agree to this in the video to help each other and prioritize, yeah, yeah. Um, and then also with some of the bigger projects and things that are, where people have time, like getting quotes and estimates, that there are times that the board can assist the staff or somebody can say, okay, I can take, I can get estimates for that. And you know, whatever, um, handle that, it's something that does eat a lot of Kim's time and, and draws away a lot of focus as well, because, you know, you're kind of on a first schedule. So a couple of things that we talked about. Penny, you have anything else to, you wanna add, or?
I just have one question, which is, do you prefer email or text? Because, yeah, I have all these ways that I can communicate with you, and I, sometimes I do texts, and sometimes I do emails, and I, I don't know which is your best.
Um, I check my texts, or you generally, if it's something that needs to be dealt with immediately, that's gonna be the best way to do it. If it's just something every day, an email is, is better, yeah.
Okay, and we already did the budget, so we're done with that, um, I have just a couple of quick things, so, just a few questions, uh, for your correspondence, I think. So, um, I've presented some sense out there for trustee training dates for 2022, um, so there's one in February, one in May, July and October, I'll put it on the planning calendar. So for anyone who hasn't done it or wants to do it, and I think we're all gonna have to start doing two hours of training in the next year or whatever, so those dates will be out there. Um, we received, um, uh, the Berlin School sent out a solicitation for, um, advertising in their yearbook. And I don't know that we've done it before, I don't know if we'd like to do it, um, it's basically twenty dollars for an eighth of a page, forty bucks for quarter page, sixty bucks for half a page. And I don't know if there's anything that, if it's like worth trying to incorporate something about scholarship in there, or, um, I just sort of. I don't know, so it's fairly inexpensive if we wanna try it, we think we can reach.
Which yearbook?
I think it's the, um, high school.
High school.
High school yearbook. Not near yearbook.
It, it's debatable, I never look at Elsie's yearbook. You might advertise to high school kids, I look at Otis's.
Congratulations, senior class.
We don't have anybody right now that, like, has been volunteering, like, you know.
No.
Well, we do have a senior that has volunteered a lot.
Who's that?
Brady Hells.
Oh, she's a senior?
She's a senior, and we might need to discuss that with the scholarship, because she does not live in Steventown. But her town does not have a library, so I don't know, she lives in Cherry Plain, she lives at the Cherry Plain Post Office.
She's been a huge help, like, she has done a lot for this library, and she actually came in and was just shelving, you know, she did, she's done a lot of different things for us, so she's been fantastic. Brady. Well, the problem is that she doesn't technically live in Steventown, and this is for people who live in Steventown only, so, how do you, that would be something that we'd have to.
The only loophole I could see is that Cherry Plain does not have a library, but, so it's not like she could have volunteered at her own library.
We have a terms of this trust document.
Discuss later.
I'd have to look in our documents, I don't know. We, we, my guess is that, my guess is we don't, but I can look, I'll do some digging.
Well, just saying that if we don't have the operational document, I don't know where it is, I don't know who else would be working on this, we probably take a, figure it out.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think when we publicize what we say, like it says in there, right, like.
But the question is what binds us to that.
Right, just in terms of what people like it. Yeah, okay.
I said I will.
I'll look at that, I mean, we could put something in there to say, congratulations to Brady, thank you for all the volunteer work that you've done for the Steventown Library. If we want to. That's true. When I gave it to Jen, I was thinking a bit more of a, um, you know, just like a way to show that the library is supporting the kids, but then when Rebecca just said that she never looks at, you know, her high schoolers, I'm kind of like, well, maybe then we.
I just thought if you were trying to advertise to adults.
That's kind of what, you know, the thought would be, is that the adults would see it and say, oh, well, hey, you guys can go and be a volunteer here, but. Um, I'm good to say we can table it for, until, you know, next year when we get another. Another request.
Last, new thing I have, um, Kim had an idea, but I think it was a great idea, um, so with her, the newsletters that she is monthly, and, you know, for the goal, keep that going on monthly. Uh, she thought it'd be nice to include a, um, note from the board in each newsletter, maybe highlight something that's going on, what we're planning, whatever. And have to be looked through and people could see it, something, um, uh, you know, from their committee or just in general, so I thought that was a nice thing about my help, it's connected, so.
Doesn't need, it doesn't have to be anything huge, even if it's just a few sentences, just, you know, I don't wanna add more work to everybody's plates, but that would be just a nice way for people to hear from, not just me.
And it's like how, with recruitment, I heard several people sort of say, oh, we're, there's something, right, they seem nice, they said this is my friend. What about including this, um, being lazy year, but, um, this trustee profiles, rather than have less come up with things, or write about the supporting a trustee profile, and there's absolutely much.
I think that that's a lot to put into that element, I could do a very short one, but.
Or we could, maybe we can link to them on the website, you know, something like that, we don't have anything, right? There's, there's exciting things going on, of course, I mean, to talk about, we've done it for a month, okay?
Oh, apparently you don't. It's the email newsletter, no, it's, um, it goes out to about 600 people, um, and it could be anyone from, you know, cardholders to, there's a, there's also people who, you know, just support the library, or. It's usually about a third of the people, it's, it's not a huge number, but it's, according to MailChimp, it's a decent statistic.
Something else, it's constantly on the holidays.
Definitely the most important thing about.
Should be here in the library, because the library has more than once tried to contest the will to. Be able to use the money the way it wanted, rather than as a scholarship.
Okay, well, I will look for it.
No, we just went to lawyers and they said, no way.
Does it say specifically in it that you remember, like, it has to go to someone in Steventown?
I don't remember that level of detail.
Okay.
It's pretty ironclad, it's gotta be a scholar.
I'll, I'll look for it, we must have it somewhere.
The question is whether it's, uh, what's the, the understanding of actually, you know, like, you're, you're.
Right, right, okay, I'll look for it. Yep.
Good annex, Cherry Plain. I'm, I'm, I'm feeling pretty green here, I haven't been all that involved, if somebody wants to take me under their wing on their committee or whatever.